The City of Boston zoning board with you is hearing for June 27, 2023 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March 2025. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer a comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Check, click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then to provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. Okay, Mr. Stenbridge.
Good morning, Madam Chair. President.
Mr. Shepherd. Mr. Shepherd, are you present?
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Valencia.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Thank you. Good morning, Ms. Better Brazza.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Ms. Panato.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. And just to thank Ms. Panato in advance, this chair will be transitioning to Ms. Panato at the midpoint, and so I appreciate it in advance. Thank you.
Happy to help out. Hope your voice lasts that long.
I do, too. I'm so sorry. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes, we'll start with the extensions. We're scheduled for 9:30 a.m. First, we have case BOA 118755 with the address of Horace, 61 Horace Street, which also has a companion case of BOA 1187853 with the address of 63 Harms Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Attorney Laurence Catino from Richard Lynn's office with a business address of 245 Sumner Street in East Boston, here today seeking a one-year extension for the project located at 61 and 63 Horace Street. This project involves subdividing and erecting a new three-family residential dwelling. The applicant got a little bit behind in financing due to COVID, but we're here today, back on track, and hoping to have a one-year extension from August 6 of 2023 to August 6 of 2024.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
When was this first approved?
Back in 2021.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? With that, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to grant an extension from, to August 6, 2024.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Ms. Panato.
Yes.
And I see Mr. Langham joined us, so, Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Thank you. The chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 962337 with the address of 15 Mercer Street. This is the first request for an extension. Decision due to expire by June 2 of this year. If granted, the new expiration date is June 2, 2024. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Attorney Matt Ekel from Fletcher Tilton with a business address of 100 Franklin Street on behalf of Swella Kashi and her family. We're here this morning, as mentioned, seeking a one-year extension for the project at 15 Mercer Street in South Boston. This project was previously approved to change the occupancy of the building to a three-family dwelling. Due to this being approved kind of near the tail end of COVID and then some turnover with some sprinkler plans, things have gone longer than we hoped, but all plans have now been completed, and we are requesting the one-year extension so the final plans can be reviewed by ISP.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to grant an extension to June 2, 2024.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Ms. Panato.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1107041 with the address of 1201 Saratoga Street. This is the first request for extension. Decision due to expire on August 18 of this year. If granted, the new expiration date is August 18 of 2024. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, I am, Mr. Stenbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Attorney Derek Small with a business address of 51 Dobson Road, Brentwood, Mass. We're here today seeking a one-year extension of the approvals granted by this board for the project at 1201 Saratoga Street, which was to erect a six-unit building with seven parking spaces.
Okay, what's your request? What's the reason for the extension? Sorry.
Due to COVID and some financial issues, you know, we had to delay the project a little bit, but we are back on track. Financing has been secured, and we're ready to go.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve an extension. I'll make a motion to approve an extension until August 18, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Ms. Panato.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Next, we have case BOA 1044720 with the address of 3326 to 3328 Washington Street. This is the first request for an extension, which is due to expire on July 9 of this year. If granted, the new expiration date would be July 9 of 2024. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
I don't have a raised hand here. Hold on one second. Here. Is it Phil in Primary Development? You guys look in the... Is this your case? Hello?
Hello, can you see me?
No, you from Primary Development?
Yes, this is Wyckham.
Okay, let me just make you a panelist, and once you become a panelist, you'll be able to unmute yourself and turn on the video. Go ahead. We can't...
Hi, this is Wyckham with Primary Development on behalf of the property owner, which is Terrace Oppa LLC. Primary Development has a business address of AD Terrace Street, Boston, requesting the extension for the 3326 Washington Street project. This is a multifamily development in the Jamaica Plain or JP Roxton, Brooklyn District with a high degree of affordability. The project was approved also during COVID, and I'll be requesting the extension to continue to pursue financing and bring the project to viability.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion to approve the extension until July 9, 2024.
Thank you. May I have a second? Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Ms. Panato.
Yes.
Mr. Langham. Mr. Langham?
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. The chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Next, we have case BOA 909744 with the address of 11 Muggles Street. This is the third request for an extension, which is due to expire on July 4 of this year. If granted, the new expiration date is July 4, 2024. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Mark LaCast, LaCast Law with a business address of 75 Arlington Street in Boston. This is a proposed six-unit residential building on a vacant parcel that is between two other buildings owned by this applicant at number nine and number 15, so it would fill in a missing tooth, if you will, between the two buildings. Approvals were originally obtained, and through the last extension, the board confirmed that the COVID Act extension effectively rendered the first request unnecessary, so this effectively would be the second request for an extension, and the reason is that financing has been tricky, and they continue to pursue that and hope to be able to build the six units when financing is secure. The request for an extension is through July 4, 2024.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to grant an extension till July 4, 2024.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Ms. Panato.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Thank you. Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have, excuse me, next, we have five companion cases. Those are case BOA 606484 with the address of 64 to 64C Allen Dale Street. We also have BO, case BOA 606486, the address being 66 to 66C Allen Dale Street. With that, we have case BOA 606487, the address being 68 to 68B Allen Dale Street. We also have case BOA 606488, the address being 70 to 70B Allen Dale Street. And finally, we have case BOA 606489 with the address being 72 to 72B Allen Dale Street. I'll ask for the representative, applicant or the representative to explain, because there is a timeline with this, so I'll let them go.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Mark LaCast, LaCast Law with a business address of 75 Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the applicant and proponent of this project, the Wonder Group. I will explain the history of this case briefly as possible. The five companion cases before you were originally granted relief by this board in 2000, in March of 2017. Thereafter, two separate abutter challenges were filed in the Suffolk Superior Court, one by Spring House Senior Living Community right next door, and another by a group of abutters collectively in the neighborhood. Both of those cases were ultimately resolved in the Superior Court, one by settlement in 2019 with Spring House Senior Living Community. The other, however, was not resolved for another two-year period after the Superior Court ruled in favor of the Wonder Group and dismissed the abutter appeal for lack of standing. In June of 2019, the abutters filed an appeal to the Massachusetts Appeals Court, which ran headlong into COVID, of course, and that appeal was pending until July 19, 2021. So effectively, the litigation stay was in place through July 19, 2021, and that was the day that the abutters' brief was due in the appeals court. And on that day, instead of filing a brief, they filed a voluntary notice of dismissal of their appeal, effectively finally ending the four-year legal challenge brought by the abutters. So the decision became final on July 19, 2021, and the two-year period of validity runs through July 19, 2023. Since the dismissal of the abutter appeals we filed and had approved by the BPDA a notice of project change for a reduced-in-scale project consistent with the settlement with Spring House, and we have also had BPDA design review of the plans of the reduced-in-scale project, which will utilize the same zoning relief originally granted by this board. The design review was approved by the BPDA in August of 2022, and plans are now proceeding to advance the project to the construction phase. It is 16 units of housing on a two-acre parcel on Allen Dale Street. With that, we would request this is effectively the first extension through July 19, 2024, which is one year beyond the validity of two years following the dismissal of the final abutter appeal in the appeals court.
Okay, thank you, Mr. LaCast. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Pardon me.
Is someone making a motion or Mr. LaCast? Is this person part of your team?
No.
I'll make a motion to extend it until July 19, 2024.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second. Pardon me, we would like to offer public comment, please, if that's allowed?
Oh, no, we don't do that. I'm sorry. You didn't want me to. Javier, do we do that with extensions?
It's not necessary, which is not very common. You don't think it's required? I would advise against it.
Oh, okay, then we will continue the voting. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have case BOA 982948 with the address of 4843 Washington Street. This is the first request for an extension due to expire on August 25 of this year. If granted, the new expiration date is August 25 of 2024. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, good morning. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Kevin Cludier from the Cludier Law Firm located at 1990 Center Street, West Roxbury. I represent the owners of residential property at 4843 Washington Street, who are asking for this extension on a project that was initially approved by the board on June 22 of 2021 with a decision filing date of August 25 of 2021. The project involves an increase in the occupancy from two-family to three-family so that we can legalize a pre-existing third unit by adding dormer space and sprinkling the building. The project had received unanimous support from the West Roxbury Zoning Committee as well as the ZBA back in 2021. With some of the uncertainty in the, you know, the housing economy during 2122, my clients sort of hit the pause button on the project, though they have obtained BPDA approval through the design proviso. They also, since recently, compile all the requested documents to move forward with the building code review at ISP. So we'd ask this board's consideration for an extension of one year to allow them to complete that process.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to grant an extension to August 25, 2024.
May I have a second? Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Ms. Panato.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we proceed to the board's final opportunity hearing, scheduled for 9:30. That would be case BOA 1411317 with the address of 16 to 18A Warren Place. Is the applicant and/or their representative available to explain?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, John Moran, Alpine Advisory Services with the mailing address of 130 Beach Road, Orleans, Mass. Joining me in this presentation will be Bond Worthington, the architect. This board approved the election of a four-unit townhouse with garage parking on April 11, 2023. It was subject to provisos, BPDA design review with special attention for friendly pedestrian experience in one 10-foot curb cut. We are here today because the 1-foot, 10-foot curb cut deprives access to the approved garage plan, which Bond will address in more detail, and effectively creates a zoning violation because the project requires four off-street, four off-street parking spaces. The board, in considering the granting of the relief to provide, to approve the project, would review, and I wish to review, the area, the street, and the surrounding traffic conditions. The street Warren Place is a short street running from Warren Street, a major artery leading into Nubian Square and terminating at Trevor Place, a private way. Trevor Place runs from Dudley Street and terminates at Warren Place. There are, on Warren Place, on the even side, there are three single-family homes in off-street parking. On the odd side of the street, there are three, three deckers. The project is located at the end of Warren Place. The parking shown on Trevor Place is off-street parking for a major residential commercial development on Dudley Street. That is the parking for the project on Dudley Street. The site locus abuts a commercial one-story structure on Dudley Street. We suggest that Warren Place is not a pedestrian pathway that would have active and significant pedestrian traffic. It is at the end of Warren Place. It is not a walkway to Nubian Square or Nubian MBTA parking rapid transit. A part of the incentive for undertaking this project is the desire of the applicants to vest home ownership in their children. They are blessed to have two of their sons working in the business, which is a real estate development and management company. Secured parking is sought because it would not require loading and unloading of vehicles used in the business in the maintenance aspect of the business. This is a minority Roxbury-based business. The applicants have been residents of Roxbury for more than 50 years, and we seek relief by removing the one 10-foot curb cut. I would ask Bond to fill in additional details.
Thank you, John. Bond Worthington, architect, business office of 110A Inman Street, Cambridge, Mass. Is it possible to share my screen, or if not, can we pull up the ZBA plans?
Yeah, they need to pull up, pull up the plans. Can you do that?
I don't have the ability to share my screen, correct?
No, you don't.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't know if that's Jessica or who's controlling the screen. Thank you.
This, this letter, actually, this would be a great place to start. So this is many letters of support that we've received for the project and neighbors in the area that are in support of not only the project, but their configuration with the garages and curb cuts, which they specifically mention these letters. If you scroll down, there's some images in the, at the end of the, of this packet. Again, many signatures of support, Urban League. Okay, so this is a view of Warren Place looking to the west, back towards Warren Street. To our right is Pever, Pevier Place, which is a private way, and if you continue scrolling down, you'll see, actually, I'm sorry, that house that was in the first image on the right is, is to be removed, this house that you're seeing here, and this is where the development's going. Okay, if you keep scrolling down, you can see the house is in terrible shape, has been demolished. So now this is looking down the private way. Apologies for this being rotated, but there's no pedestrian experience here, there's no sidewalk on this private way, and we're at the very end of Warren Place, so foot traffic's pretty minimal here. There's no reason that anyone would walk this way as opposed to Nubian, Dudley Street. Could you continue scrolling down, please? Okay, this is, all right, this is looking back the other way. The development would be to the right of this white house here. The house that's been demolished is the darker house in center-right. The house that's been demolished is the darker house in center-right. And we already looked at that photo, continue scrolling down. Okay, here's a good view of Pever Place. There are private parking lots here for the businesses on Dudley Street, and our project would be, again, where this red house is. So there's really, preserving the sidewalk on Warren Place to connect to nothing on Pevier doesn't really make sense. Plus, we would be treating the, we would have lighting and things that would actually improve the pedestrian experience on Warren Place. Can you continue scrolling down, please? And then I think we have some slides of just the condition of the house, so this needed to be improved. Is it possible to bring up the zoning plans? And would it be helpful for the board to hear, look at the floor plans again and look at the units in a little more detail?
I'm going to defer to Hansi on that. Is that helpful to you?
I think the architect can briefly just show the site plan, just for other members to see the case. That would be helpful, but it can be brief.
Yeah, I think the majority of us sat on the original case, but not all of us.
That's correct. Chair?
Yeah. Madam Ambassador, are you able to pull up the site plan? And if not, Mr. Worthington, can you sort of just speak to it? And I know we all can pull up Google Maps as well, if that's helpful for folks.
Madam Chair, is BPDA and BTD representatives online?
I saw Mr. Dimico, if you want to weigh in.
Yeah, Mr. Dimico would be really great to weigh in on the site plan.
Oh, hi.
Better Brazza.
Oh, great, and Jeffrey too, their BPDA previous recommendation.
Okay.
For context.
Sure, but before we do that, is it possible to actually see the ground floor plan of the architecture? This really isn't giving us a lot of info. Continue, one more slide after this. Sorry, one more. Okay, here is, this shows Warren Place across the bottom of the page and Pevier on the right. And you can see that we have individual curb cuts with some sidewalk between most of them. Essentially, it's four 10-foot curb cuts. By reducing the, by adding the proviso to go to one 10-foot wide curb cut, it makes it technical infeasibility and means that the townhouses that were approved don't really work as designed.
Okay, Mr. Hampton, do you want to just briefly provide your context, your previous?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We stand by our recommendation that we made back in April. This is something that we're not in favor of. We're not in favor of someone having an approved project. They do have an approved project, it does have provisos attached to it. We're not in support of somebody having an approved project and coming back because they don't like provisos attached to it. We stand by our recommendation, we're not in favor of four curb cuts for one building. We understand the townhouses of it, but it is, when we look at it, it's one building. We believe, and our recommendation, I think, is full set, is that the parking can be reworked with one curb cut. I'll leave it up to Mr. Dimico to, you know, confirm and deny that, but the BPDA stands by its recommendation, which will only be two and a half months. Thank you.
Oh, hi, Madam Chair and members of the board, Bob Dimico, BTD. I agree with Jeff. The curb cut can be reworked, and also the parking design, I believe, can be worked as well. And I side with the BPDA on this project, so that's my comment. I think this can be improved, and four curb cuts is kind of, you know, overkill. And so I just want to rework the parking. If we can, I'd like to work with the applicant to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dimico. Any other questions from the board? Any additional comments from Mr. Worthington?
No, thank you for your time.
Yeah, just to put some context, I was on that board, as Jeff just mentioned. BPDA recommendation was to deny without prejudice. The full board heard the applicants and actually approved the project with proviso. And my recollection was that the recommendation was to consolidate the garage entrance to one entrance for more accessible and better pedestrian experience.
Thank you. Thanks for that recap. Any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none.
Madam Chair, may I make one final comment?
Yes, sir.
I suggest this is a unique location with minimal pedestrian traffic. This board has approved in the past similar projects in a more rural part of the city. We are not creating, I would suggest, hazards to pedestrians because there would be minimal pedestrian access. This site was a problem. ISB had a number of housing court complaints filed against the prior owner, and the applicant was motivated to undertake this project with specific uses in mind, that is, that their sons would occupy this project. And we would, again, request the relief of approving the project as designed without the restriction of one 10-foot curb cut.
Thank you, Mr. Moran.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I've gone past the property recently, and I do concur with the proponents that there is literally no pedestrian experience in that area, other than very, very minimal, for sure. In terms of, I appreciate and hope that Mr. Dimico will follow up with them. One curb, four curb cuts may be overkill, but one has to be configured probably better than I know to get the vehicles in and out. So in terms, again, in terms of pedestrian experience, that's not going to negate anything going forward. But in terms of four cars being able to get out of one driveway, pretty much, that would be challenging, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question, maybe it's more for Javier? Is it possible to approve the applicant in regards to removing the 10-foot proviso, but then to set a new proviso to suggest to work the parking layout with BTD and BPDA?
Great question.
Yes, you could certainly.
Okay, that sounds good. And then just for Norm, I hear you. It's just, in terms of urban design principles, do we want to advocate a city that lends itself to an urbanism that is automobile-centric in the city? Or do we want to support kind of a happy medium? And so this project does rely on supporting car-centric kind of urbanism as a stance? So I just wanted to acknowledge Norm's feedback, but also to look at it in the context of just urban design.
Well, good point, Hansi. Coming to a medium-type solution, I think would be better.
Correct.
I think we're doing something like that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I think coming, meeting somewhere in the middle would be great. And so with that, may I have a motion that can lend itself to that?
Madam Chair, if I may, I have another question.
Oh, I'm so sorry, go ahead.
For the proponent, when we saw the project, if I remember correctly, one question was about, what are the ways for the project to prevent all the gases from the cars in the parking lot to come into the unit, the living room, etc.? I think you mentioned at that moment that you were still trying to figure about ventilation. So did you resolve that issue, or what is your solution to prevent that films from the cars that are going inside apartments?
There will be a mechanical engineer engaged on the project once we've gained approval and are moving forward.
Thank you.
Mechanical ventilation and gasketed doors, and it's not an uncommon configuration that we're proposing.
Yeah, and Madam Chair, I would just add, I know we approved a larger project, I abstained on it because it's a Madison Park project with that Urban League site, which will significantly increase pedestrian activity in that area.
Thank you. Okay, with that, may we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with proviso, which is to remove the 10-foot curb restriction, but to work with, that the applicant needs to work with, BTD and BPDA on a parking solution that would make it more pedestrian-friendly.
More pedestrian-friendly and still not four curb cuts.
And reduce the curb cuts, yeah, let's propose.
May I have a second? Second, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to the 9:30 AM scheduled groundwater conservation overlay district hearing. First, we have case, we have two companion cases, being case BOA 1466902, the address of 440 Tremont Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 1466921, the address being 450 Tremont Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Mr. Secretary, on behalf of the applicant, Matt Lawler with the law firm of Robinson Cole, offices at One Boston Place, Boston, Massachusetts. Briefly stating, these are air matters concerning compliance of a proposed deep energy retrofit and renovation project at the Ebbawite Apartments in the South End. The issue before us is compliance with the requirements of Article 32 of the Code, given the project's location within the groundwater conservation overlay district. In attendance with me this morning are Phil Cullen from Wind Development, the project developer, and Sarah Ebaugh of DHB, we're the project engineers. We submitted a presentation, and would ask the moderator to pull that up, if she could. Excellent. So I will hand it over to Phil, and if you go to the next slide, he'll take it from there. Thank you.
Was that person elevated, or Mr. Long?
He was, up until like two minutes ago.
He might have jumped off.
Okay. I'll go ahead, and if Phil is able to jump on, we'll do it. So yeah, so the project is on Tremont Street, close to the Master and Pike Extension, the north end of the South End. It is two separate buildings, one that fronts on Tremont Street and one that's separated by a landscaped courtyard. The project includes, I think, as the initial description indicated, renovations to units nonstructural, but including exterior panels on the building. You can go to the next slide. This is an elevation from, I believe, Tremont Street, and the next one would be an elevation. Yeah, that's Tremont Street, the first one was from the rear. The project is a BHA-owned land with the Ebbawite Apartments, limited partnership as the developer, as the sort of re-renovated buildings. And the reason why we're here, and I'll let Sarah kind of take it here, is basically the substantial rehabilitation hook for GCon is what brought us here. So Sarah, why don't you take it then?
No problem. Don't mind going to the next slide. My name is Sarah Ebaugh from DHB, we're the site civil engineer on this project located at 101 Walnut Street in Watertown. So this is just a plan of the existing conditions. The property lines are highlighted in blue here. Each lot is about 6,100 square feet, but as you can see, most of it is taken up by the two multifamily buildings. As Matt mentioned, they're owned and fee by BHA. So based on this project for the deep energy retrofit, the upgrades place us in Article 32 of the facility. However, based on the existing site constraints, we'll tell a review in a couple of slides. It's really unfeasible to provide infiltration on-site. So if you don't mind going to the next slide. Just to provide a brief overview of the proposed site work, there will be some minor trenching to install upgraded utility lines and reconstruction of portions of the concrete plazas to meet ADA requirements. Along with the energy retrofit, we created the need for condensate lines for each of the buildings, and those will be connected directly into the internal roof drain system. Next slide. Thank you. As I mentioned, the building takes up the majority of each parcel. The building here is highlighted in gray on each of the individual parcels. The black circles that you see throughout the site are the belt piers supporting the building. And there are multiple existing utilities you can see highlighted in the different colors, drain, sewer, water, etc. So really, any subsurface infiltration would impact those existing utilities and potentially could undermine the foundations of the building. DHB has had extensive conversations with both Boston Groundwater Trust and Boston Water Sewer Mission to review the project and the constraints on-site. We've come to an agreement regarding the fact that infiltration is just not feasible here.
Great, thanks. I think if you want to just go back up to the slide right after, above that again. So basically, as Sarah indicated, the request is for a waiver of the capture requirements of subsection A of section 32-6, while complying with subsection B of that section. And so I think we can stop here and take questions from the board. Your pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Semenelli, are you on?
Yes, Madam Chair, good morning. Good morning, members of the board as well, Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. We do support the applicant's request for variance at this time along with Boston Water and Sewer. And this will be pretty much consistent with the way that the board has granted variances for projects like this over the years, with the two primary purposes being, one, if an infiltration system or systems are installed, it would damage foundations of the existing or abutting structures. And two, also in this case, the composition of the fill has a high amount of coal in it, which has some contamination with lead, and that would also lead to a migration if the recharge system was installed to that contamination offsite. So based on all the documentation and the discussions that we've had with the applicant, going back to, I think, as far as 2021, we support their request for variance at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair, so this is a renovation, and the question is, if you are going to do the renovations with the residents living there, or you are going to relocate the residents during their renovations?
I'm happy to answer that question. This is Phil Cullen on Wind Development's team. I lost internet earlier, so thank you, Matt, and the rest of the team for covering for me. We are planning to do this as an in-place renovation, where the residents will have day spaces during the day, and we're remodeling their bathrooms and kitchens without displacing any residents.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
What, Mr. Shepherd in the chair?
Yes, sir.
And what's the timeline for the construction and the inconvenience of the tenants and the problems?
We're hoping to start construction this year, hopefully before the end of the year. And all in all, it'll likely take about a year and a half. However, the inconvenience for the residents will be much shorter than that. A lot of the construction has to do with the new exterior facade to create the deep energy retrofit for the building. But the day spaces will be as temporary as possible. but the day spaces will be as temporary as possible. Hopefully residents will only spend, you know, a very brief amount of time out of their units and then be able to return.
And I know this is a GCon battle, but do you know who you were selecting for general contract on this project?
We've been working with Keith Construction on pre-construction and it's likely that we'll continue working with them.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm very glad to see that those apartments, those BHA apartments are going to be renovated and I make a motion to approve the project.
May I have a second? Second, Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thanks very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1363981, with the address being 20 Holyoke Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Doug, is that you? I'm sending a request to you. And then M. Stein, I see you have your hand raised as well. I'm not sure if you're on.
Sorry, I need to wait until our hearing, correct? So I should put my hand back. Is that right?
Thanks, yes.
Okay.
Is anyone on for this call? Stefano, if you can raise your hand? I don't see anyone. If you're a representative for this case, can you unmute yourself or raise your hand?
I don't know if M. Stein is with this project.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. I didn't know I could unmute myself. I was waiting for you to do that. I was trying to raise my hand a bunch.
Are you with 20 Holyoke Street?
I'm with 20 Holyoke, thank you.
Okay, perfect.
Thank the chair and the board. So it's my first time doing this. I'm Matt Stein. I'm the designer of this project. I represent the owner and the GC, Stefan Oganata. For the carport project at 20 Holyoke Street, I'm with Holyare of Boston Landscape Company, located at 535 Albany Street, Boston, Mass. And I just, just jump right in. Thanks for bringing up the plans. I think everyone here is going to be really happy, especially the groundwater representative, because we're trying to do something really progressive here. It's a little different maybe than things you've seen. We're going to go way above and beyond what Boston Water and Sewer approves, but we also have another plan from Boston Water and Sewer that we can flip back and forth from, so you can see that we did have this all reviewed by an engineer as well. So the request is to build this carport. It is a copy of another carport located at 28 Holyoke Street in the same alley, so the layout is basically identical. Carport has a green roof on top, so I'm unsure if the board recognizes that as permeable space or impermeable, but the design for this ultimately would capture up to five inches of rainfall, which is four more inches than required by Boston Water and Sewer. So unsure, like, there's one cool detail. If you could scroll down one slide, please. So this is the existing, right? So it was a black top area that's impermeable and then the decks are set on top of concrete. They're like pads, on pads. So it looks like, you know, the deck is permeable, but that's actually sitting on concrete. We discovered that when we demolished it. So we're only adding 100 square feet of impermeable surface by putting a patio down. But if we count the green roof as permeable surface, then we're actually increasing the permeable surface by 300 square feet. Go down one more. Keep going, keep going. Down one more, down one more, down one more. So here, on the right, there's a, if you go up, please. Right there. So you can see on the right-hand side, there's a circle that shows a close-up of the paving pattern. So these bricks actually have a product called Porus pave set in between, so there's two inches of basically gravel and binder so that water just pours right through. So this entire surface actually acts like a drain grate. So the entire surface is hiding pores. And then we are, in addition to that, adding four drains connected to pipes underground. So then all of that is sandwiched in 12 inches of aggregate and Boston Water and Sewer allows you to say that that's 0.3 open space per cubic foot. So yeah, all in all, we have just so much drainage and I'm really excited to do this project because, you know, I've been landscaping in the South End for 20 years. I've worked on countless projects and I've been waiting for a project that could do something that was, you know, so appropriate for really capturing groundwater and so sort of ecologically future-forward instead of a typical dig a big hole that just gets filled with rats anyway. So any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Mr. Semenelli, do you have any?
Yes, Chair, members of the board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. We have both those from the applicant and we certainly like the look of this and we certainly like the design of it. We'd love to see more of it. I would add a note for the applicant, these systems are only as good as, as long as the voids in these spaces are clear. So maintenance is of the utmost importance when putting in something like this. So I would encourage the applicant to maintain a regular maintenance schedule, keep these voids open, whether that's power washing or racking sweeping. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, here none. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Take it.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much and thank you, Christian, for the maintenance note. That is absolutely part of the program.
Sounds good. My pleasure.
Have a great day, everybody.
Next, we have next we have case BOA 1466403, the address being 18 Loveham Square. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Hi Bradley, are you, oh, I'm sorry, it might be the Holland Group. Holland Companies, are you here to speak on this proposal? You're on mute, you're on mute. You want to mute?
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
My name's Nicholas. I'm with the Holland Companies on behalf of March Forts, the owner. We're putting in a groundwater system here. Pretty standard, we do it on a lot of our projects. We got a letter from our civil engineer with a no harm letter. That's, that's pretty much what I got.
Mr. Semenelli, do you have a comment?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Here are none. I'm going to ask for a motion.
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you for the seconds, thirds, and fourths. Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza.
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have, moving on to the 9:30 AM hearing. I'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals at this time.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Sorry, go ahead.
Richie, is it you? Go ahead.
Thank you, Attorney Ross. Mr. Stenbridge, 74 Horace Street.
74 Horace Street. That would be case BOA 1459061, with the address being 74 Horace Street. Anything you'd like to say about this?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Linds with a business address of 245 Sumner Street, East Blossom, on behalf of a petitioner. Madam Chair, members of the board, we've reviewed the ECDAs recommendation with respect to this project and we believe that the, that this could benefit from a few changes. So we'd like a deferral to modify our proposal and come back and present the modified plan.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. How much time would the applicant require?
Oh, right.
I think, what dates are we looking at, Mr. Salas?
The next available, it could be July 25th, so we could push that to August 8th if you think you need more time.
I think July 25th could be a little quick, so maybe the earliest one that you have in August would be, would be best.
Okay, August 8th, without being late.
Great, thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to deferral to August 8th.
May I have a second?
Take it.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Any further requests?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge, at 1222 Washington Street, please.
So that would be for case BOA 1368388, the address of 1222 Washington Street. If you would explain for us, please.
Yeah, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Mike Ross, attorney with the law firm of Prinsel Bell, on behalf of the applicant. This is a notice and advertising issue. The individual parcels that are associated with this address were not included in the, in the notice or purpose and therefore upon discussion with Attorney Colbert of ISD, we all believe the most to correct the notice issue, the best way to do that is to re-advertise and include all the individual parcel numbers. So we're requesting a deferral just to allow for enough time for the re-advertising of the, of the matter.
Of the year, what are your dates?
Yeah, for this one, I would recommend August 29th, just to get down enough time to add the time.
Okay, Mr. Ross? With that, may I have a motion? May I have a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion to defer to August 29th.
May I have a second?
Again.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd. Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Any, any further requests for withdrawals or deferrals for this timeframe?
Okay.
With that, then we will return to the
Is Mr. Fair Weston trying to defer something here?
Yes, good morning.
Yes, for 9:30?
For 11:30?
Okay, so we'll call that at that time. Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge.
Okay. Next, we have case BOA 1448465, the address being 78 Julian Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, good morning, members of the board. Derek Hobson here, licensed general contractor with a business address of 8 Woodville Park here for the owner, Tanya Rivera, regarding 78 Julian Street. We're proposing three-family residential dwelling specific for low income. It's going to have three off-streets parking spaces, excuse me. And the design completely aligns with the MOH's housing standards. It's two bedrooms, 1,160 square feet per bedroom. Thank you for doing the slides. We're going to do hardy plank siding, PVC trim, 30-year architectural shingles. It's going to have an unfinished basement. You see the window, you factor. You can scroll, please. Next slide. These are just, so it's going to have rear decks for the egress in the rear. The basement might be unfinished and that's pretty much it. I couldn't take any questions, but
Thank you. Can you just clarify, I know you just noted, you know, specific for low income, but you're not, these are not going to be deed restricted, are they?
Deed restricted, no.
Okay, so, so there's no way for us to confirm that they will indeed be sold as lower-income tenants? I just wanted to put that out there. It's, I mean, that's fine, but I just want to clarify, you're, you're saying low income, but it's not like deed restricted for that, correct?
Oh, no, it's not deed restricted for low income. And the building isn't going to be for sale.
Okay.
The owner lives next door at 82 Julian and this is a building she's looking to own and maintain to add some, you know, some apartments to the Commonwealth.
Thank you.
But you mentioned major, mayor, MOH Mayor of Housing in the mix. Are these prototypes from them?
So in the building's design, we refer to the Mayor's Office of Housing Design Standards and that specifies minimum bedrooms in our units and we align and we exceed some areas regarding that. So one of them would be for a two-bedroom, the minimum square footage is 750 square feet and we're going to have 1,160.
Right, but you're just adopting the design standards, you're not getting you're not getting subsidies from Mayor of Housing.
Oh, no, there's no subsidy. We're just kind of, you know.
That's perfect, okay.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
I do have
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Bede Barazza.
I'm sorry.
Someone can mute.
Can you mute? Jessica, can you mute? Anyone who's not, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Bede Barazza.
I think someone else was before me.
Oh, okay.
You can go ahead. I'll go after you. You can go ahead.
So this is more of, do we have a representative from the Mayor of Housing online? Maybe Jeff Hampton from BPDA? It's Jeff online?
Yeah, I'm here, Ms. Bede Barazza.
So Jeff, this is, this is the comment that I made before on the prototypes coming out from Mayors of Housing that don't really address issues of accessibility, but we received a note from Sarah Tilton, who is from the Mayor's Commission for Person with Disability, where she made comments in regards to making the front entry more accessible. Can you please make a note, this is the second time I, I request this, to have Mayors of Housing, if, if people are using it as a prototype, to address that issue? So there's, there's no conflict with Mayor's Commission for Person with Disability.
Right, and it, you know, I agree with that, Ms. Bede Barazza, and as you can see, we recommend approval with design review on this case. And I think can address that issue through the design review.
Correct. But can you please pass that information?
I shall.
Okay, thank you.
I see someone, Kristen, who looks to be on for Mayor's Office of Housing because I think Ms. Bede Barazza is bringing up sort of a general because I think Ms. Bede Barazza is bringing up sort of a general policy slash design issue to, so that they can reconcile and be more aligned. Is Kristen here to speak?
So again, sorry, Derek, this is...
Oh, no, no worries.
This is basically...
It's a general feedback.
It's a feedback we receive for your project, but I don't think it's just your project, I think it's...
All right, I think it's a feedback, and when you were done, I was gonna ask you to go to the front elevation of the building, because it shows specifically a clear entryway. See, you just go straight in, there's no stairs. And Ms. Rivera is actually dedicating the first unit to handicap accessibility. So we're gonna be working with the architect to tweak that design. Initially, it was just gonna be, you know, low income, but some passed, some time passed, and she decided that she wants to do the first floor for handicap accessibility.
Okay, great.
Okay, great. Sorry, did you, Ms. Bede Barazza, there is someone from Mayor's Office of Housing, did you just want her to comment briefly, and then I know Mr. Langham had a question?
Yes, if she can comment on the feedback and that I just mentioned.
Yeah, Kirsten, are you... I don't know if she's elevated to panelists, or if you can do so, and in the meantime, Mr. Langham, you could ask your question.
Yes, I just had just a small question, I was just curious. How's the parking situation on Julian Street?
Um, where we are, we have, she has, uh, this property's actually not parking for three cars. This property's actually gonna have parking for three cars in the rear. But the two top houses on the street has parking. We're parking in tight everywhere, and that's why we implemented a small building to accommodate parking in the rear for each unit.
Thank you. A lot of those lines, Madam Chair. Mr. D'Amico is still with us, he had a comment regarding that.
Mr. D'Amico, do you want to comment? No, Mr. Stenbridge, maybe you want to read it into the record?
To do that, for 78 Julian Street, the project should have two spaces parked at a 60-degree angle for safe mobility, was the comment that we received from Mr. D'Amico.
Okay. Thank you. His screen looks frozen, so I think he may not be with us. Any other questions or comments from the board?
So just one comment, Derek, I did review your plans, and although your front door is accessible, there, you do have to go up a little more? Four risers to get to the first unit, so it's not, that's what, that's what our... That's what Sarah Tilton was commenting on from the Mayor's Commission for Person with Disabilities.
Yes, and we recognize that as well, so we're gonna go back with the architect and make those tweaks.
Okay, so if Mayor of Housing, if she can speak on the prototypes and what they're doing to address accessibility issues?
Yeah, certainly, can you guys all hear me? I can't speak to the specific design issues. The reason that I'm attending the hearing is because this is, this site is what was one of the Mayor's Office of Housing yard sale sites that was sold about 20, 25 years ago, and so there, we will impose a deed restriction on at least one of the units to ensure affordability in the long term. I've spoken with the developer and owner just briefly about this, and so we'll be working on that to solidify the details about everything going forward.
Kirsten, I think my comment was, basically, the developer was using the Mayors of Housing prototype examples to kind of inspire their design. And we've seen some past projects coming forward without an accessible unit, usually using the STUP technology, so we just want you to be in alignment with Sarah Tilton in addressing some of her concerns with accessibility to units.
Yes, I understand that one of these units is going to be accessible, and after this meeting, I will follow up with our design team to ensure that all of our, you know, I understand that...
The prototypes, yep, that value, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I just want to pick up on BTD's comment about two spaces, because I think that would also allow some green space on this site. It looks like the entire site is covered with the building or paving. So I would like to sort of ask the applicant, can we see some permeable surface on this driveway and paving? And with the elimination of one of the spaces, some landscaping?
Yes, we're also looking to do, and like I said, we're making tweaks with the architect. We're looking to do an enclosed trash receptible area as well as squeezing in some open space. We're trying to do 300 square feet of open spaces, so we're not, we're going back and forth with the architect now.
Thank you. Okay, with that, may I have public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Reese Conklin with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed their community process at this time. Our office is held in a butters meeting in April of this year, where butters expressed concerns over the project, with one butter explicitly supporting the project. Other letters of support or opposition have been emailed to ZBA and are filed with them at this time. I was not notified of any stance the local civic group has taken, but at this time, we'd like to defer to the board's judgment, thank you.
Madam Chair, I would also like to add, Keesa Santana from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would also like to add that the Blacksbury Neighborhood Council expressed concern regarding if there are deed restrictions which the applicant has confirmed already in the Mayor's Office of Housing, but just wanted to put that on the record as well.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
Kristen, you looking to give testimony here, and Lorraine, actually, Lorraine, I know she's from the Left Official's office. We'll start with Lorraine, and then go to Kristen. Lorraine, can you hear us? You might be muted. No, go ahead.
So, we've attended a meeting with the Sustainable Development Committee of Dudley Street Neighborhood Initiative, where this project received overwhelming support. And so the city councillor, Tanya Fernandez-Anderson, gives her conditional support to the project. However, we were waiting for the information that was delivered today by Kirsten Stublian to make sure that the requirements of the yard sale were complete, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
We're gonna give testimony? Oh, okay.
This is Kirsten from the Mayor's Office of Housing. Just to follow up on what Lorraine said, we'll be working with the developer and owner on an ongoing basis to outline the specific parameters of affordability and the deed restriction on at least one of the units that we'll require. And so we can get back to you with more details as the negotiations progress.
Thank you.
Please, I have more additional raised hands.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval with proviseal to have BPDA design review and BTD review to reduce parking to two, to allow for an increased open space, and for one unit to be designated as affordable with MOH.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, the chair also votes yes, the motion carries, good luck.
Thank you, have a good day. Next, we have case BOA 1398805. The address of 46 Mayhew Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Hi, can you raise your hand if you're on for this proposal? Ledson, this is so, or... I don't see anybody on.
Okay, do you want to go to the next one, and we'll come back to this?
Good. For that, you will move on. For that, then we move on to case BOA 1360901. The address of 88 Maverick Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago &amp; Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. If we go to the next slide, please. Here on behalf of Mike Stutchen, the owner of the proposed project, and we also have Adam Blasman, the architect for the proposal. This is to confirm the existing occupancy and then change it from a three-unit building to a four-unit, to completely renovate the building and erect a fourth-story addition and a rear addition. The particular building is located in the Maverick Square area, right outside of the square, and... If we go to the next slide, please, what we're looking at is a rendering. The existing building, which is the smaller building there now, that's actually three stories, and has been abandoned and left unattended for years, until my client just recently purchased it. So this will be completely renovated as part of the proposal. We're seeking to add a fourth-story addition and then a rear addition. Right now, there are existing rear decks on the property. Those decks would be removed, they're in poor condition. The rear extension would only go out as far as those existing decks and fill the back and give these rooms more functionality. Right now, they're very, very tiny one-bedroom units, and this proposal would allow us to have larger living space area, one bedrooms, but also on the top floor, the third and the fourth would become duplex units. They would have office space and a large open floor plan for the kitchen and living area. If we go to the next slide, please. This area is right within short walking distance, right to the next block, to Maverick T Station, which makes it great for those commuting. And you can see there are multifamily residential all around it, although the buildings to the left and right, of which we had support, are three-story buildings. If you look across the way, along Parrish Street and other across the street, there are four-story for precedent. Just to point out, when we first had filed this project, we were proposing to add some additional living space in the basement, because I know that was mentioned in the BPDA's recommendation. As we filed, we discovered this fell into G-Cod and flood hazard district. We immediately moved that basement space, so that would only be used for storage in this proposal. And we did submit everything required for our no-harm letter for G-Cod. If we go to the next slide, please. Just to go over the floor plans, the basement will remain unfinished just for storage. Unit one is a one-bedroom, 614 square feet. Unit two is a one-bedroom at 667 square feet. And then the third and the fourth floor are 754 and 627 respectively, and those are bi-level units that would have that fourth addition, fourth-floor addition at the third floor. Just to note that the proposed height, we really worked on keeping that down. We're only adding three feet 10 inches total to the existing structure of the building. Just to go over the violations that were mentioned, we are seeking a variance for four-unit, because this is a 3F district. We would require for FAR relief for height for that being at 37 feet 8 inches. And four stories, it's a 35-foot height district. We are not able to create any parking, so we do have a parking variance, there's none there. There's no existing parking PR, as I had mentioned, right across from Maverick T Station. And we also worked in agreement with our rear butter, who owns a parking lot, to lease for two years, two spots, and then with an option to renew after that, just to give those folks that would be moving in here an option to have some parking paid for by the developer. And it was just something we worked with on the Maverick Central group as well. And then, just a rear yard, it's existing at eight foot four. That does require variance, but we're not going out any farther than the existing decks. And in the rear, we matched the building back of us. Madam Ambassador, if you could switch to the plans, just so the board could just see those, the existing floor plans. And if we go to the next few slides, these are all existing plans, and these are existing where the porches are, and then we go to the proposed right here, if we go to the, these are the proposed units that I had gone over as well. I can pause and answer any questions that the board may have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drago, so just to confirm, there is no, no living space in the basement, you said, storage only?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna open it to public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, calling our new man with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. Our office hosted a butters meeting on July 6th of 2022. Noah Butters reported to be in attendance. The applicant went on to meet with the Maverick Central Neighborhood Association September and October of 2022. The association voted to support the proposal. We're unaware of any concerns at this time, and we also received several letters of support from the community as well. With that, we defer to the board, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Kristen Semenelli, Boston Browler Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant for G-Cod.
Thank you.
Can I have my brief stand?
Great. Javier, just to confirm, do you need two separate votes, one for G-Cod, or can we do that together?
Oh, sorry, yeah, you can do that together.
Okay, okay. Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, can you let us know what the BPDA recommendation was for the project?
Sure, can I, Mr. Parra, can I just, are you trying to speak on this? I'll read that afterwards.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Sebastian Parra from Councilor Polite's office. Based on Maverick Central Neighborhood Association's vote, the council would like to go and support the project, thank you.
Thank you. If Mr. Hampton is here, Ms. Bede Barazza asked for the recommendation, BPDA recommendation?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ms. Bede Barazza, we recommend it to now without prejudice because of the living space in the basement, because it's in the coastal flood, but we appreciate the appellant removing that. And if the board does seem fit to approve this, we just ask for design review.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review and no building code relief.
And the G-Cod?
And the G-Cod approval.
May I have a second? Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you very much. Next, we have, next we have case BOA 1464017. The address being 76 Frankfurt Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Linds with a business address of 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. With me also is Chris Drew from 686 Architects. We probably jump right down to slide eight, which is the street view of the property. Before I give my overview. As a preliminary matter, Madam Chair, although not cited in the public notice, I do note, I think it's important for the record, that the plans examiner had cited in his notes two matters. First is the neighborhood design overlay district, which we acknowledge that this property is located in. However, it does indicate that design review is necessary because of the NDOT overlay district. We aren't making any changes that would fall within the jurisdiction of the NDOT, and therefore, we just like it to be clear on the record that this would not be subject to an NDOT process. In addition, we also note that the examiner cited the coastal flood resiliency overlay district, and that conservation would be required for this project. Just again, for the board's clarification and for the record, the coastal flood resiliency overlay district, although is jurisdictional in this neighborhood, the project size does not fall within the threshold of the CFROD. And therefore, again, as it's noted in the refusal letter, I just wanted to be clear in the record that we would not be subject to coastal flood resiliency guidelines for this project, as it doesn't meet the threshold for that review. With that said, Madam Chair, this is a pre-existing, legally pre-existing non-conforming structure. Its currently legal occupancy is six units, however, historically, it has been used... However, historically, it has been used and occupied as a five-unit dwelling, which isn't allowed use, so it's not necessarily material. However, because we are proposing a renovation of the entire building, including capturing some space off of the rear decks to incorporate this habitable living space, we do trigger the FAR violation under Article 53, Section 9 of the code. If we can jump down to slide 13, that will give us a little bit better overview here. So this is the existing conditions plan for the site. We do have some non-conformities included in the left side yard, as well as, as I mentioned, the FAR currently is in excess of the 1.0 that is permitted. Because we'd be increasing the FAR based upon the space that we'd be capturing towards the rear, we require one variance essentially for this project, and that's the FAR variance, to increase it to the proposed limit. If we could scroll down to slide 18, these are existing conditions, and we can just move on to 18 to show the proposed conditions. So again, even though we are located in the coastal flood resiliency overlay, we are not proposing any work in the lower level. We do propose to modify, obviously, the program of the first level. That would be a three-bedroom at about 1,200 square feet. Again, these are all generally existing conditions currently. The only changes would be renovation and reprogramming of units, including upgrades to life safety. Next slide, please. So we show the second and third levels here, where we have two smaller units located to the front of the building. Again, pre-existing conditions with just some slight changes in the program of the building and layout. The two units to the rear, units three and five, are two-bedroom units, about 827 square feet each. We go to the next slide, please. We do propose some changes to the side of the building. There are some windows that will be closed up in connection with the reconfiguration of the layout. But again, we don't believe that that triggers any of the neighborhood design overlay issues that would normally be reviewed under the NOD guidelines. Next slide, please. Just showing again the left side of the building as well as the rear, and these are the proposed conditions, showing the closing up of several openings on the side of the building. I will pause there. This is also, I'm sorry, this is also subject to G-Cod, so I believe we do have the no harm in the Boston water letter, and I'm happy to answer any questions of the board.
Thank you. Mr. Seminelli, do you want to confirm that first?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Seminelli, Boston Browler Trust, and we have both G-Cod letters from the applicant.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to know why they closed these windows?
I believe Chris Drew, our architect, is present, but I believe there's a reconfiguration. So Chris, if you could explain that.
Yeah, so it's basically just reworking the windows themselves. Where some of these windows are, where some of the things with the windows are, we'll be making bigger cars and things at that, make sure that was intact, the window locations that are supposed to be.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. Can I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, calling our new man with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. ONS hosted a Butters meeting on December 6th, 2022. There were Noah Butters in attendance. The applicant went on to meet with the Go Street Citizens Association in November of 22 and January of this year. The association unanimously agreed to support the project. Residents were reportedly very pleased with the design. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Sebastian?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Once again, Sebastian Parra, Councilor Coletti's office. Based on Go Street Citizens Association vote, the council would like to go and support this project as well. Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion.
Thank you. We need a motion. Ain't got all days. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion of approval with BPDA design review on the exterior.
And approval of G-Cod?
And approval of G-Cod.
Madam Chair, if I may, and I don't mean to step on Ms. Better Barza's toes, we're not proposing any exterior, visible exterior modification, other than closing some windows. So I'm not, I'm hoping that BPDA designer review can be avoided, if Mr. Hampton so agrees.
Okay. Jeff, are you okay with that, removing?
Our recommendation was only if there were exterior changes, that no building code relief be.
Yeah, I didn't see any. So I think what we'll do is just then do a motion of disapproval.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
So G-Cod and approval. Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barza?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we move into the hearing scheduled for 11:00 AM, we'll ask if there are any requests for deferral or withdrawal from this point?
21 Holton Street?
The ready first one?
Case BOA 1258624, with the address of 21 Holton Street.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with a business address of 11 Beacon Street. We are seeking a withdrawal for the application due to the fact that we significantly changed the project. It went from an existing ERT to an ALT application. Talking with plans examiner, need to withdraw or refile the entire plans for a new application.
Got it. Thank you. Any questions from the board? With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion withdrawal.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barza?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Are we going back to the previous case? And then also, are we taking withdrawals for deferrals, I'm sorry, for 11:30 or just the?
We're only at 11:06. We're on schedule, so just a moment.
We did.
But we need to go back to?
Yeah.
So do you want to finish if there are any other deferrals for 11:00? And then if Mayhew came back?
That would, that would be, yes.
Thank you.
So if there are any other requests for withdrawals, deferrals for this timeframe?
Yes, please, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Timothy Burke. I'm the architect for the project at 6 Greenwich Court, and we are requesting a deferral. The ISD has identified a citation for groundwater for the G-Cod that wasn't in the original refusal letter, so we have to re-advertise for that.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? With that, may I have a motion?
I make a motion for a deferral.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes. I think I need to read the cases into record.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. This motion is for case BOA 1436713, with the address being 6 Greenwich Court.
Okay, great. So we're in, so we had a motion and a second, and I'm voting Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barza?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Madam Chair, it's pending August 20th at 9:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Go ahead.
August. Are there any other requests for withdrawals, deferrals for this timeframe? If not, thank you for the reminder, folks, that we need to go back to the 9:30 timeframe and ask if there are any representatives present, 46 Mayhew Street.
I saw him.
Can you unmute yourself, Winston?
Hello, I'm here.
Okay. Can you identify yourself, your address, and walk us through the proposal?
Yes. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
Yes. My name is Gladson. I'm the contractor. And the proposal is extend the basement to living room, because the family have two people, four in the family, mother, father, and two teenagers, and the space is too short. And you want to have a basement, replace the case, step case with a new bathroom, office, because the father worked in a home. Okay, office space, living room space, and gym. And we want to extend for four rooms.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. Can I have public testimony? Is there public testimony for 46 Mayhew?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I'm just waiting for it to come in. I'm afraid our liaison stepped out.
Oh, no worries.
I have no additional raised hands outside of that.
Okay. We'll give you a moment, Mr. Derneman.
Thanks. I will testify. I don't believe we're aware of any concerns at this time. Mayor's Office like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, may I have a question?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with a business address of 11 Beacon Street, here on behalf of the client, City Realty. If you could stay on this slide, please, Madam Ambassador, thank you. And I also have Dan Artigius with Embark with the architects, who you'll hear from in a moment. Again, this, the project that you're looking at before you did go through a full process and was voted approved by the BPDA board. The proposal, and as you can see in this picture, that front part of the building, that's an existing structure. The proposal is to renovate the existing two-story structure and then to erect a rear five-story addition on the back of the building, which would be connected and with a total of 39 residential units and 17 interior parking spaces in the back section. The particular lot size is 21,521 square feet when combined. When you look at this, you can see we had, this was our most updated iteration. When we started the proposal, we had a much different project. It was to raise the structure and build a building that looked much different. As we, as you may know, this falls in the Aberdeen Historic District. It also, through the process, was recommended to keep the front building that was very important to the community. So this is where we came up with the design, to keep and rehab the front part of this structure and then continue on with the residential housing in the rear off of Commonwealth. This particular, if you go to the next slide, please. And this is just looking at how that's connected on the side of the property. Next slide, please, just. As you can see, this particular building falls in area of Commonwealth, large-style apartment complex behind us in the back, as well as directly across the street. Although this does fall in a 3F district, it touches upon both light commercial as well as multifamily residential on either side. This particular project is, falls within the guidelines of the Alston-Brighton Mobility Study, because it's located directly across from the Green Line MBTA Chiswick Road Station, making it great for commuter access, and it also is connected to many bus routes right in front. This particular building, and as we went through the process, we knew that affordability was important to this community. We are at an 18% affordability rate for the project, and that includes seven IDP units with a mix of five of them being at 70% AMI and two being at 100% AMI. If we could go to the next slide, please. This just shows you the highlighted area, the parcels when combined. As you can see, it's pretty steep topography as you go back, but you start to see the landscape surrounding us and the other sort of large structures across the street and in the rear to the side. Next slide, please. And Embark just put together here just the height context, so you can see, so the varying heights, some 10, 8, 5, and 4, just in this general area, up and down, Commonwealth Ave. Next slide, please. We also, just to point out, before I turn it over to Dan, have a mix of housing stock. We've got 12 studios, 15 one-beds, seven two-beds, and five three-beds. The studios range from 415 square feet to 745. The one-beds range from 600 to 766. The two-beds range from 735 to 1,055. And the three-beds, which are their five of them, range from 950 to 1,310 square feet. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Dan to touch upon his points.
Thank you, Jeff. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dan Artigius with Embark at 580 Harrison Avenue in the South End. This is the existing condition survey of the site. As you can see on the right-hand side of the screen, is the footprint of the existing two-story building. As part of the project, we'll be not only keeping the building, but also restoring it to its former position as a craftsman-style home, matching the other homes to the north of the page. Additionally, as part of the addition and development in the rear of the site, we're maintaining the 20-foot setback on the north side of the property with our Butters to maintain existing tree scape and landscape along that property line and minimize the massing from our residential neighbors. In addition to the existing condition survey by a surveyor, we also have a landscape architect that went out to the site and did a survey of existing trees and existing plantings. And we have a comprehensive landscape plan, not only to maintain the landscaping along Commonwealth Avenue, but also to maintain the mature trees in the non-developed area on the site, as well as landscaping the new vehicular and pedestrian access off of Commonwealth Avenue to the south. If you go to, skip the next two slides, the third slide, please. Yes, thank you. Just to show the footprint of the connection, show that setback along the north side of the page here, a single-story connector to connect the five-story rear addition with the front home. And that was to minimize the height of the connection and minimize the view of the connection piece from the street. So while you're on Commonwealth Ave, the idea is to have both of the buildings seem like they're separate structures, but be connected inside to provide accessibility. maintaining the 20-foot setback on the north side of the property with our butter to maintain existing tree scape and, and landscape along that property line, and minimize the massing from our residential neighbors. In addition to the existing condition survey by a surveyor, we also have a landscape architect that went out to the site and did a survey of existing trees and existing plantings, and we have a comprehensive landscape plan, not only to maintain the landscaping along Commonwealth Avenue, but also to maintain the mature trees in the non-developed area on the site, as well as landscaping the new vehicular and pedestrian access off of Commonwealth Avenue to the south. If you go to, skip the next two slides, the third slide, please. Yes, thank you. Just to show the footprint of the connection, show that setback along the north side of the page here, a single-story connector, connector to connect the five-story rear addition with the front home, and that was to minimize the height of the connection and minimize the view of the connection piece from the street. So while, while you're on Commonwealth Ave, the idea is to have both of the buildings seem like they're separate structures, but be connected inside to provide accessible access to both buildings. Next slide, please. These are just a series of plans, but you can see how, in the rear of the site, in the parking plan, we have 17 parking spaces utilizing a semi-automated parking system. There's an elevator in both the existing home, as well as the rear addition, to provide fully accessible access, as well as a dedicated bike room in the rear addition. Next slide, please. Oh, you can go to the next slide. Yes, and this is just a zoom-in of the parking. Something on this slide is the importance of providing both accessible and dedicated pedestrian access and vehicular access off of Commonwealth Ave. As Jeff had mentioned, this is a challenging, challenging site, due to the grade change from Com Ave to, to the first floor of the existing structure, which is about 13 feet. And then there's an additional grade change to the center of the site of about another 10, 15 feet. So we have about 25 feet grade change from Commonwealth Ave to the center of the site. So to provide accessible access off of the street, we're providing a, a sloped walkway to the, the existing home, as well as a elevator and stair access up to the residential levels, and then also a paved, permeable paved access to the rear building and the parking, that is dedicated and separate from the vehicular access based on, off of the existing curb cut. In addition to the vehicular access, we're working with our butter to, to the south of the page, the, the commercial building on, on the corner of Commonwealth Ave and Chiswick Road, to rework our parking entry, to be respective to their business use, as well as the existing retaining wall on our, on our property line. Next slide, please. This is just showing the, the main entry off of Commonwealth Ave to the existing home. On this floor, we're providing amenity space, a secondary access point to maintain the historic front door access to the building, and then in the rear, the dedicated bike room. Next slide, please. And this is just a slide showing the connector piece, a single story with three units off of it, as well as a sloped, mitigating the slope of the site within the corridor connecting the two buildings. Next slide, please. Standard, standard residential floor, this is above the roof of both the connector piece and the existing home. Next slide. Again, residential floor, fourth floor, mixture of studios, one and two bedroom units. And then lastly, next slide is the fifth floor, where we'll be pulling back from Com Ave, providing an amenity room and common amenity deck on the roof of the building, facing Commonwealth Ave. Next slide. In terms of the elevations, Jeff had presented the, the landscape, the rendered elevation prior, showing the connector space, the minimizing of the height of the connector, as well as the step back from Com Ave. Next slide, please. And then just the front elevation, you can really see the change in grade from Commonwealth Ave on the, the upper elevation to the existing home, and then subsequently to, to the rear building. And then I believe that is the last slide. Thank you for your time today. Open it up to the board.
Thank you. Just a couple of things that came up in a written comment that I observed, if you could speak to landscaping and trees, what's existing, what are you proposing, as well as some noise from the deck, obviously it's a large common roof deck, that can accommodate a lot of people, how would you address those items?
Yeah. So in terms of the landscape, we've engaged a landscape architect. As I had mentioned, we, we've taken a comprehensive survey of the existing plantings on site to maintain the mature trees on the site. We've also, through our landscape architect, have identified numerous invasive species on the site, because over time, the site has been overgrown and not well-maintained. So as part of the project, we'll be removing the invasive species that are existing on the site and replanting trees that are, are common to the area. And that goes in hand-in-hand with our comprehensive landscape plan that we have, not only for the landscape along Commonwealth Ave, but also on both the vehicular access to the south of this page, as well as the 20-foot setback that we're maintaining along the north side of the page. And then, in terms of the common roof deck and the noise, we try to, with the massing of the building, block it off from our residential butters, utilizing the, the, the access from the stair and the elevator, as well as we'll be minimizing the occupants on the roof, it'll be posted for limited occupancy, and then there will be hours based on the building management system to minimize when people can access that desk, that deck, working with the building management company.
Other questions from the board? Can I see Mr. Valcek from BPDA?
Thank you, Madam Chair, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Quinn Valsich, and I'm the project manager at the BPDA. This project completed the Article 80 review process, including two BPDA-sponsored public meetings, and was approved by the BPDA board on June 16th, 2022. The project team went through great lengths in working with the BPDA design staff to appropriately restore and incorporate the existing historic building on the parcel. The project will designate 18% of its units as affordable. We're making safety improvements to the knee-right intersection as requested by the community, and will contribute $30,000 to the Boston Parks and Recreation Department with the support of nearby parks and open space. The proponents have also committed to transportation demand management measures, including Blue Bike memberships and one month of free MBGA passes for new residents. The BPDA staff found that this project is consistent with the city's goals, and the project is the full support of the agency and its board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none? Oh, do I see, no, okay.
No, no, no questions, I think it's a pretty modest proposal, you know, and respectful.
Actually, Madam Chair, I have a question for Mr. Drago.
Yes, sir.
You have seven affordable units, that is 80%, and I'm glad to see that the projects that you are representing are increasing the affordability levels, or the number of affordable units. Now, the apartments, the units are for 70% and 100% area income. Is there any reason why there are not any units for 50, 40, 30% area income?
I think, well, as we kind of went through the, that's a great question, Mr. Valencia, we just went through this process, we were committing to a lot of different areas, to mobility and transportation upgrades, to the Blue Bike Station, so there were a number of areas we had to contribute, and being at well over that 13%, being at 18% alone, we felt that was a reasonable ask from the community, and we worked that through not only the community members, but also Council of Brayden, to come up with, to come up with this number.
They clearly precede the answer, and the work that the developer put forward to ensure that there are more affordable units, but I will, I will always pay attention to see who can qualify for those units, and most low-income residents in Boston don't qualify for the, even for the 70% area middle income. That is just a comment in general for all the projects that are being presented to a, presented to a board. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry, Mr. Valcek, are you speaking again?
Oh, no, my, my apologies, I'll put my hand down.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Well, with that, may I open it up to public testimony?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Frank Mendoza here, Mayor's office of Nookland Services, Austin Brighton Liaison. We'd like to defer to the judgment of the board in this matter, but can testify that the applicant last went to the Brighton Alston Improvement Association on August of 2022. I believe John Lai from the Brighton Alston Improvement Association is on to testify this morning, and there's a little bit of confusion, it seems, as to whether or not there was a final vote at the BAI A and what the outcome of that vote was, if any. Again, at this time, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Okay, any other official offices before we get to public testimony? So I'll go down the line, I'll start with a male. We asked for the director butters to briefly tell us if you're in support of opposition. Go ahead, please state your name and address for the record, first of all. Sorry, I'll come back to you, this sounds fun. Mario?
Yeah, Mario Penteau, 50 Engwood Avenue, I'm in favor of this project.
Okay, thank you. Debbie?
Hi, this is Debbie O'Rourke, I own the 1781 Commonwealth Ave. If you look at the photos, I'm the yellow house, I oppose this project. There is severe amount of ledge that will structurally damage my property. The deck is overlooking my property, as well as the deck was an add-on, it was never brought to Brighton Alston Improvement, and it was never approved at Boston Improvement. The parking is an actual danger and a life-threatening problem, right now as existing, especially with the elderly Jewish home that is right behind this. This project, if approved, will negatively impact the, the quality of life of 1781.
Thank you. Greg? All right, go ahead, Greg, can you state your name and address and briefly tell us if you're in support or opposition?
Good morning, my name's Greg Human, I'm an owner of 16 Wallingford Road, which is a direct butter of the property. I also oppose this project, I submitted some written comments to the board, which I believe you have, but let me comment, make one comment. One of the members of the board called this a respectful project, and respectfully, I have to disagree with that. At the Brighton Alston Improvement Association meeting, which I believe was held on September 1, 2022, I stood up and I made my presentation indicating that I opposed the project. I spoke to the attorney for the developer, and I'm a lawyer in Boston, I'm easily found, I gave him my business card, I asked that they reach out to me, I asked that they reach out to the other butters to discuss this project, and they never did. Never got an email, never got a phone call. I think what's happening here is the developer is trying to jam the largest project they possibly can onto this lot. And in fact, this outdoor deck, this 49-person deck, is an add-on that we had not seen before. I just think that this developer doesn't care about the butters or the neighborhood, they're trying to put the biggest project they can, and I would like to see them come back to the drawing board and actually engage with the butters before the board approves this project.
Thank you. Just, so we have four additional raised hands. Respect for time, you want me to keep going, Madam Chair? That's, that's fine. Okay. Tom, Thomas, were you looking to give testimony of the Council of Raffey's office on this one, or?
Good morning, no, just for future projects coming up.
Okay, all right, I'll try a male again. Again, if you guys can briefly tell us if you're in support or opposition for the project. Email? Keep going. Go ahead, email, okay. Andrea? Andrea sent a request to MUU, are you looking to give testimony on this one?
Hi, yes, thank you, my name is Andrea Human.
Are you related to Mr. Human who just spoke?
Yes, but we're separated, so I, we have different interests on the property.
Okay, well, please add new information.
Yes, yes, so I, I'm in opposition of this, and I did submit a written statement of support, I agree though with what Gregory said, as well as what Ms. O'Rourke, the owner of 1781, so we've made efforts to speak with the developer and have not had any response back. My concern is that this building, they're calling it five stories, and it is not five stories. They themselves admitted that it's 25 feet off of this Com Ave, so you're really talking about eight stories, because it's five stories plus an additional story, they're not counting. They're looking to put this building that's seven to eight stories right in front of my two family, which is going to severely restrict the lighting, the views, they're putting this roof deck again, which has been just slid through in this latest hearing without previous discussion, where the management is going to be off-site, when they're talking about limiting the occupancy and the hours, who's going to do that? Nobody's going to be on-site to enforce any of this. And I'm very concerned about the parking, I have eight bedrooms and I have six parking spaces. They're talking 56 bedrooms with 17 parking spaces, plus they're looking to eliminate the parking in front of the building on Com Ave.
Thank you.
Ready for their new parking.
Thank you. Sean? New information? Please give us new information. We do have a few people that are looking to give testimony, we're trying to get to everyone, Sean, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sean, I live around the corner at 20 Colborne, I just wanted to voice my support, I think this adds some much-needed housing to the area, it's a large amount of affordable housing, and I think it's in line with where Brayden is going, so I support the project.
Thank you. John?
Hi, I'd just like to speak on behalf of the BAI A of Brayden. They were supposed to come back to us again with changes and everything, and they never did, so we can't approve, we could not approve this.
Thank you. Thank you. Want me to keep going, Madam Chair? How many more raised hands you have? Four more raised hands. Oh, you said that before. I think we go with two more, because I think we've gotten a sense of what the opposition is. Maria? Hi, Maria, are you looking to give testimony? Ms. Serena? Sent a request to MUU, go ahead.
My name is Serena, and I'm one of the owners at 105 Wood Road, and I oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, email, again, I'll try you, you're having connection? No. Yeah, we're still, okay. Maria, again, I'll try you again. Yeah, I think take one more. Okay. AG, Peroni?
Yeah, my name is Andrew, I'm based in Brighton, 188 Daniel Street, I work in Cleveland Circle area, I can support this project, I believe it'll bring needed housing, affordable housing to the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Would the, would the applicant like to address some of the comments that have been made?
Yes, thank you.
And, and also, Madam Chair, if the BPDA can also speak on the community process, because when these Article 80 projects go in front of us, we are under the assumption that the community process has been completely heard, vetted, and some negotiations has occurred.
So I can address that as well, first, just from what, what we've gone through as, on behalf of the developers. So, as was mentioned, we had two public meetings with the BPDA, full comment period, and then multiple meetings at the BAI. As we worked with the BAI, and just to point out, the deck was always on there, we didn't change any plans or change anything at the last minute. As we heard from neighbors, we actually modified the project, pulling it away from our direct butter, which Dan showed, and his plans, just nine and a half feet, just pulled the project in the back away from our neighbor, and worked out agreements with our commercial neighbor on the left-hand side. My client does have records, he's reached out to multiple of butters over a period of eight or nine times, and we continually heard, we'll let you know when we're going to meet or when we want to meet. It just seems to be resistance every time we tried to reach out, to come to a compromise on anything. We are willing, and still willing, to sit down, but again, as I had said eight or nine times, and we have records of it, we've been reaching out to neighbors and gotten response that they would let us know when they were ready to meet. We took that as that just, you know, nothing was going to be able to be done, to, to sort of win them over, they were just opposed to the project, we'd be happy to continue to meet with them. We also, as we were meeting with folks, committed to a full construction management plan, so that we would meet with folks during, and during the, before the construction process, but also during, so if there was any disruption, we could work with them directly. Just to address the issue of parking, I know it's come up, but, you know, we're following the guidelines of the Alston Brighton Mobility Study, and also being near this, so close to Chiswick Station, you know, we would call- You know, we would call for less parking. And again, we will continue to work with anyone on our management of the project if this was to be approved. In our discussions with BIAA, we were asked to just continue to work with butters, because it seemed that there were a few neighbors that we really, no matter how many times we had this meeting, they weren't, they were concerned about having to meet in that kind of a setting. They would rather meet one-on-one, which we are actively continuing to try to do. So.
Thank you. Is the BPDA project manager still on?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So I guess just first, before I forget, I would just echo Attorney Drago's comment that the roof deck on the fifth floor was something that was there throughout our review process and in those public meetings. As to that public process, as I said before, we did have two public meetings. You know, when it came time to conclude the comment period, which was extended, actually, and then concluded. You know, we felt that the project was in a sufficient place as far as what we needed to see from it, and with the support we did hear from the community during our process to advance. You know, that votes a snapshot in time. We would always encourage proponents to do what this proponent's done and continue to engage with their direct abutters. If there are any other minor tweaks to the project they could make that might lessen the impacts on those butters. But we were satisfied with where the project was in the community at the time of our vote.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with, I assume there'll be ongoing BPDA design review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. The motion carries.
Thank you, Members of the Board.
Thank you.
So at this point, jump ahead to the discussions for 11:00, scheduled for 11:30, and ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferral at that time.
Hi, Paul, you still on for the deferral?
Good morning.
Hi, Paul. Williams, you still on?
Hello, good morning. My name is Clayton Weston.
Are you requesting a deferral from?
I'm requesting a deferral for 75 Maywood.
So you're requesting a deferral for case BOA 1309386, with the address being 75 Maywood?
Correct.
How long do you think you would need? Do you have a timeframe in hand that you find that you would like to ask for?
When is the next hearing?
Next hearing, July 25.
I do believe that'll be sufficient amount of time.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
Could you tell us why you need this to be brought?
Oh, sorry. Sir?
The deferral is necessary, because when we last came to the board, after the concern that you brought to the attention, they're requesting taking some subdivided land from a property that I own directly behind for the added parking space and had to add some things to the application. And so therefore, going to have to receive a new updated refusal letter.
Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, if it requires an updated refusal letter, with that a new date for August 29th, to get staff.
I don't think you give the CDA updated refusal letter, right, Clayton?
Yes, I did.
Oh, you did, yes.
Okay.
July.
Okay, so are we good with the original date you offered, Javier?
Yes, July 15.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge? Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Any further requests for withdrawals from, for deferrals from the 11:30 rediscussion timeframe? All right, with that, then go back to the hearings in the 11:00 clock. Next, we have case BOA 1444863. With the address being 272-276 Hyde Park Avenue. Is the applicant and or the representative present?
Yes, sir.
Identify yourself and go ahead and describe what you're asking.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Kyle Smith of Statera Law, with a business address of 359 Newbury Street in Boston's Beck Bay. The applicant is proposing to expand slightly the existing footprint of an existing structure located on Hyde Park Avenue, roughly about three-quarters of a mile away from downtown Boston, up Hyde Park Avenue in Jamaica Plain, and to expand the existing use of the first floor as a market, which has been in current use for about 18 to 20 or so years by the current owner and proponent, who was on the call with us, as well as his G C. And then to basically build three stories of residential housing above it with mirrored footprints on floors two, three, and four. One unit facing front Hyde Park Avenue, being a two-bed, one-bath of approximately 800 square feet. And then the rear units being approximately 830 square feet, again, two-bed, one-bath. We have a slightly unique situation in that we are in a LC sub-district, but we do abut a residential sub-district for Jamaica Plain, and hence, we are then imparted with the setback requirements. Our abutter to our immediate right is a four-story residential structure. We have a four-story residential structure immediately across the street from us as well. So what we're proposing kind of already has existing presence in the community and the fabric of the community. We have a proposed extension of a zero setback for both left and front and rear of the structure. And what you're looking at is some of the pre-existing structures in the community near us as existence for what presently is in place. I think that's with five street, off-street parking spaces. There is currently off-street parking. It's not really memorialized on the site plan. So now we're looking to merely memorialize it. So there's a proposal for five off-street parking spaces for proposed six residential units. And again, we lie on Hyde Park Avenue. There is a bus stop in our immediate vicinity, several bus lines, which I used to travel personally, given my location of my former residence and a very close proximity to the Forest Hills train station.
Any questions? Yep, sorry.
All right, we're looking at there. And the slide up is the existing footprint. You can see the structure to our immediate right has a slightly expanded and deeper footprint. The structure to our right has a deeper-than-footprint. We're looking to bring our footprint into line with the structure to our left. And I can walk you through any part of these plans if you would like, if you care for it.
Yep, are there any questions on the plans or the proposal?
No questions, Chair.
Okay.
Is, if Bob D'Amico is still present, he did make a comment for our committee?
Yes, hi, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Bob D'Amico, transportation department. I'd like to recommend the number of spaces be reduced from five to four spaces in order to improve maneuverability, because the way the design is right now would be kind of difficult for maneuverability for five spaces. So I'd like to request that the number of spaces be reduced from five to four. Thank you.
Thank you. Any public, may we get public testimony, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. I've called our new man with the mayor's office, Neighborhood Services. At this time, our office would like to defer to the judgment of this board and some background information on the community process. Our office hosted a butters meeting on April 4. The applicant then went on to meet with the JPNC zoning committee, and we're aware that they were approved by the zoning committee. We're unaware of any concerns at this time. That will defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
I have no raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, any issues with that parking recommendation?
We did not in the community process hear any complaints about the lack of parking. So I don't think that it would be problematic. The depth of spaces really won't change. So I would say for five spaces for six units for family design units is probably ideal. But if the approval of the board is contingent upon, you know, having the buy-in of the BPDA and its recommendation, then I think that would be acceptable to the proponent. But I don't think it is ideal, given the intended use.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I ask one follow-up question?
Yes, please.
Is the current building, is it housing the deli market? Like the, or is it, it's not the green laundromat? It's next to the green laundromat, correct?
Yes, the laundromat is to our immediate right. We are housing the market in the name of the market as existing is what is on your plans before.
Right. Are you going to find a way to keep the existing tenant?
Yes, ma'am. Well, I was actually onsite today at a project. I help the client obtain zoning relief for which the G C of this project is the G C of that project. They've only had about 10 business days of downtime throughout that entire construction process. So it's my understanding that we don't intend to displace that tenant. They will be operational for a period of time.
Right, because it's minority-owned businesses, that kind of block. So thanks for letting us know that they won't be displaced.
Importantly, the proponent is the owner-operator of that market.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from the board? With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA design review paying special attention to the quality of the material and the top-floor massing.
May I have a second?
Oh, I'm sorry. And with a proviso of three parking spaces to allow for maneuverability.
I think it was five floors or?
Oh, I'm sorry, four. Four spaces.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Madam Chair, just to clarify, the BPDA design review would encompass the material concern, correct? So are providers the design review and then the reduction of parking?
Correct, correct. But I'm asking for a special attention for the quality of materials and the fourth-floor massing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1472384, the address of 330 C Street, which is also an Article 80 project. The applicant and or the representative present?
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself on this.
Thank you, yep.
George Marancy, I am here for 330 C Street. Are we taking this out of order, or is Greenwich Court going first?
Yep, thank you.
Greenwich Court?
It's not out of order, it deferred.
Okay, I'm sorry. I saw it on the screen. Thank you, yes. Good warning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is George Marancy. I represent Rise Together and City Realty proponents of this project. The proposed project consists of a new 74-key hotel on a site comprising approximately 8,202 square feet at the intersection of Cypher Street and C Street in South Boston. The site is currently occupied by a vacant, single-story block building, which formerly out-of-state repair garage. This is an Article 80 small project, which was approved by the BPDA on April 13 of this year after a 13-month public review process. Architectural services are being provided by Group One Partners, and Harry Wheeler from Group One also joins us this morning. And I will be turning the presentation over to Harry very shortly. 330 C Street is located in an industrial residential transition area in South Boston. The site bridges the residential St. Vincent neighborhood with the commercial area on the south-westerly edge of the Boston Convention and Exhibition Center. This is the intersection, as I said, it's E Street, which is running left to right in the rendering that's on the screen now, and Cypher Street, which is the street that is running more or less north to south on that current slide. The uses in the area, I'm sorry, the uses in the areas, it says primarily an industrial residential transition zone. Harry Wheeler will go through the plans. I'd like to first speak about the request of zoning relief before we go through the slides. Harry will do a much better job of that than I would. Both the hotel and the restaurant are conditional uses within the relevant First Street industrial, First Street local industrial zoning sub-district. These uses are appropriate to the location owing to its productivity, both Convention Center and the Seaport District, which drive the need for additional hotel space, including one with on-premises dining, as this hotel would have. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the operation of the uses with no adverse effect hazards or nuisances posed to the neighborhood. Variance is required for insufficient side and radar setback distances, but these setbacks are reasonable in light of the proposed use, surrounding current and future uses, and the character of the immediately surrounding area. Similarly, the proposed height of the building at six stories and just under 67 feet requires relief but is not inconsistent with projected heights in the district, including with the approved Life Science Building, which will be located directly adjacent to 202 West First Street, the height of which is being matched but not exceeded on this parcel. Finally, relief is required for insufficient off-street parking and loading. The operating model of this hotel is to attract guests who will not be bringing a car as part of the visit, and the BPDA has judged that proposed curbside loading area is adequate for a small hotel of this size where, for example, linens will be cleaned on-site rather than by an outside service with pickup and delivery vehicles. The site is within 10 minutes driving time by Uber, Lyft, or taxi from both Logan Airport and South Station. Additionally, my clients will be providing valet services for guests who do bring a car with a local valet service that currently operates several car-gating garages in the area, including the Channel Center Garage, which has confirmed excess capacity, particularly in the overnight hours. That is a summary of the zoning relief being requested before I turn it over to Harry Wheeler to present the architectural drawings. I'm also pleased to note that this will be a 100% union-built and union-staffed hotel. Unless there are any questions on any of the zoning items that I just went over, I propose to turn the presentation over to Harry Wheeler of Group One.
Thank you. Any questions on the zoning relief? So hear from your architect?
Yes, I, sorry, you mean, how are you? Yes, we do, Eric.
Thanks, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Harry Wheeler, principal of Group One Partners, quickly run through the design presentation and plans that are representative of what George has described from zoning. On this slide here, you get to see the rendering, which is an aerial view of the proposed hotel, which is facing the C Street side, and the adjacent side faces Cypher Street. which is facing the C Street side, and the adjacent side faces Cypher Street. On the bottom right, you'll see an opening or an open-air site, which is a piece of city-owned land between our project and Cypher Street, which is intended for public improvements, bike paths, sidewalks, et cetera. So we are able to work with this site as a corner site. So as you'll see, we have some openings and fenestrations turning the corner as we are able to access and show our building opening to that side parcel. In this slide, it clearly depicts, as George mentioned, a height just below 70 feet, sorry, 67 feet, which matches the adjacent Life Science parcel. The main facade, which is the brick facade, steps down below that somewhat, and the height that matches the adjacent parcel is our mechanical screen, which is set back from the C Street side. In addition, you can see a small roof terrace on the corner of C Street and Cypher Street, which is for guests only. This is a 400-square-feet step-out terrace. This is not a public roof deck of any way. It's just a courtesy of the hotel guests to be able to get outside from the rooftop and let go over towards the Convention Center. This rendering also shows on the ground level our blue-bike zone, and you can clearly see the property line, which our building is set back and aligns with the approved Life Science Building to the left, and also has a further setback at the ground floor of an additional five more feet to provide an enhanced pedestrian realm. Next slide, please, and we'll go through the details of those slides. You can probably scroll through these pretty quickly. This is the site itself, which is that rectangle that's shown. The hashed area is the existing industrial use that's on the site. Next slide. This is our site with the building footprint laid on it. You can see we're set back from the property line on C Street, and we are set back from our adjacent property line on the western edge, which is that Life Science Building. This will be an access point on the ground floor for us to get to our loading, deliveries, and also our transformer, which will be set back further off the site. Next slide, please. We do have a basement level. The basement level will house non-critical equipment, such as employee lounge, bike storage, hotel storage, restaurant storage, and our in-house laundry. Next slide. The ground-floor use has our hotel lobby right off of C Street. You can also see here, as George mentioned, the short-term loading-unloading zone, which will be for three vehicles for drop-off and pickup, as well as this would be our loading zone for deliveries, which will then be taken down that left-handed edge, down to our trash and receiving zone on the left-hand side, our western edge of the site. We have a small lobby, a relatively modest 2,000-square-foot restaurant café, which will also have access on C Street and have fenestration that looks out towards Cypher Street over the future street improvements. Next slide. You can even go to the next one after this. This is just a typical floor plan showing the hotel. We have 72 hotel rooms facing C Street and Cypher Street. We are pulling our guest rooms back from Cypher Street, giving a little bit of a green space, and again, tiering down towards the future improvements on Cypher Street. And then the rest is our core for elevators and stairwells. Next slide, please. I think this is the typical floor, so you can just keep going. I think the next slides will be the elevations. Roof plan, this is, we'll have everything mechanically screened. So next slide. And here we have our front elevations. On the left-hand side is C Street, on the right-hand side is Cypher Street. We have a mixture of glass, very transparent, on the pedestrian realm, a brick facade grouping the building into two floors at a time to bring the scale of the overall building down. The materiality is brick on the C Street, and the brick turns the corner on the Cypher Street, and then where the building is recessed back, we have a nice texture of a metal shingle style. So those metal shingles will provide some texture, and again, that feeling of South Boston, of that traditional siding material using more of a modern material. And then on the ground floor restaurant, that does come up to our property line, we are utilizing the masonry facade along that Cypher Street edge where the restaurant is. Next slide, which will be our other two adjacent property elevations, which have party wall facades. So these will be on the left-hand side, the northwest elevation will be abutting an existing structure, and on the right-hand side, the southwest facade, this will be abutting the future lab building, a Life Science building that was proposed. And here you can see our colonnade of columns, which will house our access back to our loading lobby and receiving area. Next slide, I think that might be the end of our, oh, we have a building section showing the height, again, matching our adjacent property at 60, just under 67 feet, 66'8" actually, and we do show in the partial placement. So happy to answer any questions about the project, and George is still on board to answer any questions about the zoning relief. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is someone from BPDA on?
Yes, ma'am, I am. I am the BPDA project manager for the project, and I confirm that it went through the Article 80 process since April.
Okay, can, any feedback on community process?
We had three community meetings, two last year, I believe, one in April and November, and one in March before our board approval, and working with the community and elected officials, I think the project was well-received by that.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair. My question would be, I know it's an industrial area, but which time for construction? And my second question was, I think I heard it, but I'm not sure, would Rise Construction be the GC for the project?
George, you want to take that? George, you're on mute?
Sorry about that. I'm George Moranci. Yes, Rise would be the GC for the project, that they are in conjunction with City Realty, the developers of the project, they would be the builders. In terms of construction timeline, I believe that what we're looking at is a, hopefully, first quarter or maybe a fourth quarter, 2024 start, and then maybe just under two years, I think, for construction cycle. At the time we submitted the small project review application, we were a bit ambitious about the schedule, and we were hoping for a fourth-quarter 2022 start. So it looks like that that may be pushed off by about a year, and then again, looking at maybe seven to eight quarters in terms of the construction cycle.
Does that address your question, Mr. Shepherd?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And I think I read a comment about trees and landscaping. Can you speak to that a bit? I see like two trees up on top, any street-level landscaping?
Sure, whoever's controlling wouldn't mind going down to the first, the ground floor, first floor plan, I think it's backing the other direction. Yes, right here. So we are improving the sidewalk in front of our, yep, oop, there it is. We are improving the sidewalk in front of our site by the width of our site. We are bumping out the sidewalk to the bottom right of our site, which would be the southwest-east corner of our site, which we will provide the blue-bike location. We're providing two new street trees, which will be in the sidewalk in that planting zone, and allowing for obviously enough space for pedestrian improvement. The landscape plans were reviewed during our Article 80 small project review process and presented to the community, and I believe we'll receive with what is available for site for us to actually improve.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll open up this public testimony.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Anna White with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. 330 C Street was a BPDA project. They held up robust community process. ONS is unaware of any concerns at this time, and we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ana Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support. This development received community feedback at several meetings and worked with neighbors to improve their proposal in terms of the roof deck and other issues. This proposal will create both construction and hotel jobs, and we hope bring economic activity to the area. Moreover, residents have respectfully requested that the City of Boston Transportation Department and businesses in the area work to ensure that neighbors are protected from quality of life issues, and that this stretch of C Street be made to wait traffic between Cypher and First Street. However, that C Street remains one-way, as it is now from West Broadway to First Street. This change will address concerns from the neighbors and city group about traffic coming through the neighborhood as C Street, which will force cars to turn right or left on First Street when coming from Cypher Street. The development team has expressed support for this proposal at several neighborhood meetings. Council President Flynn respectfully requests that the team continue to work with the neighbors on quality of life issues, and encouraging parking and neighboring parking lots, and that BTD will work with neighbors on resident parking enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Stellman, City Council Large Michael Flaherty. Echoing the sentiments of Council President Flynn's office, the council will go on record in support.
Thank you. Any other raised hands? Madam Chair, I have. Minor, you've been unmuted.
Take him, Madam Chair. Members of the board, minor for us representing the carpinter union is with pleasure in behalf, will go on record on behalf of all our Boston residents in supporting this project.
Thank you. Now we get channel raised hands, Madam Chair. Thank you. Would the applicant just like to respond to the feedback from Council President Flynn's office?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is George Moranci. The, I think the primary focus of Council of Flynn, Ana Calderon's testimony, I think, was that C Street, C and Cypher Street intersection, that was a major part of our conversations during the long community review process. I think we have hopefully cautious support from the BPDA, I can't speak for BTD, to perhaps change the operational features of C Street. It is, as Anna said, currently a one-way, I mean, down C Street from Broadway towards Cypher Street, so that vehicles on Cypher Street, which wanted to access the hotel, currently couldn't take that turn up to C Street. We intend, we being the development team, to petition the city, hopefully with support of the elected officials, to change C Street so that it becomes a two-way street, at least between Cypher Street and West First Street, much the way that E Street is, so that vehicles on Cypher Street don't have to traverse into South Boston to turn around and get back to the hotel that could access it directly from C Street, I'm sorry, from Cypher Street and from the Hall Road.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, put forward a motion of approval with proviso as noted on the BPDA board memorandum.
May I have a second?
Right.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Betterbraza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1461403. The address of 9 Russell Street is the applicant's and/or their representative present.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Evan Stellman of Cost of Design Incorporated. Business address of 17 Olive Street in Somerville. I'm just waiting for our attorney to hop on board, Joe Hanley.
Yes, he looks like he's asking to meet a panelist.
Yes, he's on.
There we go. There we are. Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry for that delay. For the record, Attorney Joe Hanley, Mr. McQuillte Miller, 28th State Street in Boston, here to take you through the initial part of this presentation, and then have Evan take you through the plans. We are representing the owner and proponent, 9 Russell Street LLC. The team on the next slide, Elon Sassoon, who is the principal, introduced you to myself, and Evan Stellman, who is a partner with KDI Architects, who has worked on the plans for the project. Next slide, please. So 9 Russell Street is a lot of approximately 3,523 square feet. It is on the block between Sullivan and Pearl Streets, just south of Bumper Hill Street in Charlestown. It has an existing single-family structure that is on it today, which was approved by landmarks for demolition back on October 21st, 2022, finding that it had no historic significance. Next slide, please. So just to take you for a walk around the site, you can see the existing conditions in the bottom center, the white building that you'll see, that's the existing structure that has been approved to be removed. And then in the middle, you can see the unique aspects of the property site in the pink hash, also accessed by Avon Place, which is an alleyway that runs from Sullivan Street, and it's also relevant in the photographs that you can see here of the neighbors and what justifies this application. Next slide, please. So what we are proposing is a use-compliant two-family, two residential homeownership units with two parking spaces and approximately 3,625 cro square feet. All of those, as you'll see in the zoning summary, all of those components comply with the allowable use in this 3-F zone, as well as the required parking and the FAR. First unit would be 1,700 square feet, three bedrooms, two bathrooms, private outdoor patio. Second unit, a little bigger, 1,750 square feet, also three bedrooms, two bathroom and private outdoor space, again, for homeownership. Next slide, please. So this shows you the zoning. What is most important here is what this project complies with, which is virtually everything, again, less than the amount of allowed units, two in a three-family zone. FAR compliant, height compliant, compliant with all of the setbacks. We do need relief, which is de minimis, for 1.5 feet off from the lot width and from the lot frontage. And the next slide will show you how, that's the refusal letter, go to the next slide. We put together a lot width comparison for the block. Again, this is the block between, you know, where 9 Russell is, which you'll see obviously in the dark pink hash there. And so what's important here to note for the relief is, we received a recommendation of approval with design review by the BPDA, but it also said with special attention to retention and replacement of the existing trees and the relationship to existing structures. So the two adjacent structures, the two adjacent structures you'll see on the right and the left, also have similar non-conformities. Again, the requirement for the lot width and the lot frontage being 25 feet or at 2,350 is an existing condition. The adjacent property is 2,450, also non-conforming and non-compliant, and the adjacent property on the other side is 2,462, again, slightly under what is required. So we would suggest that consistent with the BPDA recommendation and the need for housing, and consistent with the purpose of the 3-F zone, we are in context and consistent with those adjacent conditions. You'll see that that non-conformity is also prevalent at two other lots on this immediate block as well, so it's certainly not a unique condition with respect to a deviation. Next slide, please. So I'd like to hand it off now to Evan Stellman to take you through more of the details on the project itself. Evan?
Thanks, Joe. So this is our proposed site plan. On this plan, Russell Street is at the bottom, and Avon Place, which is a private way, is up towards the top. As you can see, we have a pretty expansive site. It extends to the back from Russell Street to Avon Place, and then it extends to the left behind the adjacent parcels on Russell Street. So at the narrowest point, our lot is 23.5 feet. At the widest point, the lot is 64.19 feet. And we are proposing a structure highlighted in the gray region that goes back along the right side of the site, and then extends to the left where the site opens up behind those parcels on Russell Street. Next slide, please. So this is our proposed ground floor. So this is our proposed ground floor plan. It is at grade on Russell Street. So at the bottom of the page, we have a garage entry for two parking spaces, one per unit. And we also have the entry for the residents to enter and go up to the units. From the garage, each unit has an entry access point and an outdoor space at grade on the left side and at the rear. Next slide, please. This is just walking you through the upper floors of the units on this level. Unit one has two bedrooms, a kitchen and living space. Unit two has a kitchen and some outdoor space. And I'd just like to highlight that the two trees along Avon Place are existing to remain. Those are kind of sacred to the abutters and they're important for the privacy of both the abutters and us. Next slide, please. And then this is just the third floor and the roof plan. Again, unit two has three bedrooms, two bathrooms and a deck on this level. And unit one has a master, a master bedroom on this level. Next slide, please. So moving on to the exterior of the structure, we wanted to design something that really fit in with the adjacent structures. So to the left of us, we have a typical traditional three-story Charlestown building, which is what we wanted to emulate here. You see the top right, the top right elevation, it's just a typical three-decker, two-over-one windows, a nice cornice, a nice garage, and an entry point on this, on this facade. Next slide, please. The center elevation is the right side when you're facing, when you're facing from Russell Street. You can see the three stories at the front on Russell Street starts to read as two stories when you get closer to Avon Place. Traditional-style building clad with cementitious cladding, and the ground floor would be clad with PVC board and batten around the garage. The bottom elevation shows the left side, kind of in the L of the, of the site. Again, upper two floors clad with cementitious siding and the ground floor clad with PVC board and batten. Next slide, please. And then this is the elevation from Avon Place. Most of the structures on Avon Place are one and a half stories. Because of the grade change, this does read as a two-story structure on Avon Place, and it's just the traditional cementitious cladding here. Next slide, please. And these are just some 3D perspective views. The, the top left perspective shows the, the perspective from Russell Street, and then the bottom two perspectives show what it would look like from Avon Place. And I think at this point, we don't have anything else to add. We'd open it up to questions from the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you both. Are there any questions from the board?
I have a question regarding Avon Place. Is, is that wide enough? That's, I imagine that's like an easement, correct?
Yeah, it's a private way. It's not, it's not wide enough for vehicles, it's just a pedestrian way.
So my concern is if there's ever a fire behind the unit one and a fire vehicle cannot access Avon Place, how would we, how would they take the fire out?
So, yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Evan.
So there's no vehicular access for fire department, but there is pedestrian access that they can come up to Avon Place with poses if they need to come?
Yeah, and if I may too, one of the virtues of what is being developed here is the existing structure was non-conforming with respect to the rear setback, it's basically further, further back. What we're doing, kind of respecting the zoning code with the 20-foot rear yard setback, is alleviating that sort of condition back there that also provides for more circulation for ladder hose access to get, get in there. Again, not being, it's not open to vehicular travel, but the impact is far less now as a result.
In your, in the original proposal, there is, there's not a building at the rear of an existing building. The front was open on Russell Street.
Correct, and, and so, but-
So there, there's a lot of much more open air.
Well, so, so Russell Street, obviously being a public way, that, and the reason, you know, complying with the front yard setback of the new condition as well, that's where that wants to be with respect to fire safety, right? Whereas the back doesn't go as far back, and also that's an area where you don't have vehicular access for ladder, so the ladder would pull up, you know, onto the public way where the bulk of the building is, but then it would also have access by foot through the back to less of a rear yard intrusion, I guess. So overall, this is an improved condition with respect to fire safety and compliance with the zoning code. The lot frontage deviation by a foot and a half has, you know, really no relationship to fire safety whatsoever. As we're complying with both of the side yards, actually, I'm sorry, we're exceeding the side yard setback requirements on both sides under the zoning code, so that's, you know, further relief.
Madam Chair, do we know what the BPDA recommended?
Let's see, is Mr. Hampton still on?
Yes, Madam Chair, we requested approval with design review. We, sorry, I don't have my glasses on. We wanted to retain and replace the existing trees, so that was our recommendation, but we're on, on record for approval with design review.
Okay, thank you.
And I think, Bob, do you have your hands raised?
Yes, Madam Chair, Bob D'Amico, Boston Transportation Department. The only thing is, the rear of the sidewalk is going to basically accept access and egress to the garage site, and since it has to do with persons with disabilities, I would like to request that an audio and a visual alarm be placed at the, the garage door because, oh, okay, I thought it was stepping on somebody, because the rear of the sidewalk is going to be right at the entrance of, of the garage, and they're going to have to back out, or there has to be something that's going to warn pedestrians that there is an oncoming vehicle. And this is a common practice when you have the garage door right at the rear of the sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D'Amico. That's certainly acceptable to us, and I appreciate your input.
Thank you.
The other question, yeah, the other question I have is, the site plan, the site plan has all of this luscious green diagramged in the rear, but in reality, my understanding is that there's patio, there's, there's impervious surface covering, covering that. Can you please clarify?
Evan, you want to handle that?
Yeah, can you go to the floor for him, please?
So the first floor plan shows actual patios, but the green site plan, yep, there's a discrepancy between the drawing right before this and this drawing. So which one is the, the most accurate one?
This drawing is the most accurate.
So, so basically, your open space has been reduced to potentially 20%, 10% of the site. Or in your previous iteration, you had a nice kind of green open area.
Well, we're committed to landscaping the, the unit patio areas as well. We can, we can do that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Well, can you just, just clarify this notion of replacing or retaining existing trees? I'm just unclear about that.
So on this plan, the, the two circles up towards the top at Avon Place are existing trees. We, we don't, and we're removing these trees.
Okay, and you've had a landscaper look at the, the feasibility of, of retaining them with the construction?
Not at this point, but we will prior to construction.
Thank you. Great. Other questions from the board?
Hearing none, could I have public testimony, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Sean Green with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. An abutter's meeting was held for 9 Russell Street on May 10th. It was well-attended, and the applicants were able to answer all the residents' questions, with the majority of the residents' concerns centered around the size and scope of the project. Since then, this office has received no letters of support and three letters in opposition, including one from the Charlestown Preservation Society, in which they said the proposed building would be too close to surrounding buildings. With that, we defer judgment to the board.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sebastian Parr from Council of Polite's office. Based on the amount of opposition calls, emails and letters that we have received in our office, the council would like to oppose this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have three raised hands.
Okay, please.
Ryan, you've been unmuted, if you can state your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you, sorry. Ryan Sutton, 5 Russell Street in Charlestown, Mass. I'm a direct abutter. You know, my family and I would like to oppose it. You know, we had some concerns coming in, but even as we heard today, more concerns have been raised specifically around fire safety and the garage door, where currently it doesn't require any kind of alarm visual or audio because of the setback, and with the developer wanting to move it, now the neighbors would have to be inconvenienced or have to hear every time the, the new residents back out of the space. Further on the parking, they would be enlarging the curb cut-
Ryan, I think we lost you.
Sorry, still have, do you hear me or no?
Yes.
Sorry. Further on the curb cut, so to enlarge the parking, it would take one space away on either side, reduce parking on the street by two. And it should be noted, the buildings that were previously on Avon Place both burned down in a fire years ago, which is how the previous owner acquired the property, so the fire concerns of reducing the setback next to buildings on Avon Place and on Russell Streets of absolute concern as well.
Thank you. Francis, are there other raised hands? Do we lose Francis too? Okay.
Madam Chair, it's hard to hear, but we do have two.
Are we able to elevate them, or can they still-
Yeah, I should be able to.
Okay.
Dolma?
Yes, I'm here.
Are you here to speak about 9 Russell?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So I live at 6 Avon Place, I'm a direct abutter to the property. I did submit a letter in opposition to the project, but I just wanted to reiterate, the size of the property is much larger than almost all the other properties that it surrounds. It's an incredibly dense neighborhood with the overhead wires for the electrical. There is a huge fire risk, as Ryan mentioned, there are actually three properties on Avon Place that have burned down. It's four, five and seven. So I just wanted to reiterate that it, that the parcel that they are proposing, the property is very large. I do have concerns for the structural integrity of my home with the building and would prefer something on a smaller scale that's more in line with the neighborhood, both for fire prevention and because the property is so dense, we have so little space as it is.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Lisa Talbot?
Hi, yes, can you hear me? This is Lisa Talbot, 3 Avon Place in Charlestown. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hi. So I am also a direct abutter. My concerns are really around the structural integrity of Avon Place. We are built on a hill. We also are all pretty much wood-framed structures here, so I'm very concerned about the structural integrity of our properties. And then the other thing that I just want clarification on, Evan had mentioned the trees that will stay. I guess I'm just asking about the 100-year-old pine tree that's also on that property, and if that will be staying, if this goes through. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other raised hands?
There are, no, no other raised hands, Madam Chair. I see that there's two.
Could we, could the applicant answer the last question about the tree and then anything else that was raised?
Yeah, so Evan, why don't you handle, there was reference to a pine tree, I believe. And then also, if you could speak to, there seems to be a lot of discussion on the fire safety, of course. This new structure will, it will be in accordance with new building and fire code regulations, but if you could speak to that, too.
Okay, yeah, the, I believe the 100-year-old pine tree is one of the trees along Avon Place that will be retained. We are proposing to remove a red maple that's further in on the site, so that's not one of the trees that's going to be removed. We do intend on, on constructing this building to the current building codes. I'm not sure if the applicant's committed, is requiring it at this point, but that's a discussion that we can have.
Yeah, and if that's something that the board, these are also things with respect to the trees, we take the BPDA recommendation of approval very seriously, and that's why we've inventoried in protecting the trees that we can, but we're happy to work through that, through the design process. Just briefly though, I would like to clarify, so respectfully, you know, the folks that we heard from on Avon and in the neighborhood talks about sides and setback, which have nothing to do with this, this case. We are not reducing the setbacks in any way. In fact, we are complying, if not exceeding, with many of them, and then with respect to the size. So, the underlying zoning allows for an FAR of 2.0, and this is right on page six. The proposed is 1.02, so it's actually half of what is allowed by law, so it's not correct to suggest that it's oversized. The other important thing to recognize here is that the, with respect to Avon Place, the existing structure is 3.2 feet off the rear lot line. This new building will be 20 feet off the rear lot line. Again, an improved condition for folks off Avon Place. And the other thing that I will say, this is a three-family zoning district by law, and we are proposing two units. So the size and the setbacks, respectfully, it's not an issue. In fact, it's an improvement of the circumstances. What is an issue is the lot width that's merely 1.5 feet off at the lot frontage, which is a consistent condition all along the street, and it's something that we have dealt with appropriately by exceeding those side yard setbacks, by meeting the height, and also by a modest undersized FAR.
Thank you. Francis, did you want to go back to one or two raised hands? If there's any new information people are adding, we've already heard a lot of detail on opposition.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Becky, you've been unmuted, if you can state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Robert Freeman. I live at 8 Avon Place. I am the immediate abutter to this property. I won't repeat what everybody else said, my concerns are the same, but there was a GO report done, and my concern is the integrity to my property. I've been there 40 years. There was a lot of recommendations. I sent the GO report in with my opposition, and I would like the zoning board to consider the fact that they should do these recommendations before they do anything, because the property is around me, or 150 years old. This addition they're putting on, those two lots have been there for over 100 years, so I'm sure the soil needs to be checked, because the vibration is going to affect all of the abutters, because we are on a hill. So if they could just take that into consideration when making their decision on this property, I would appreciate it.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take one more.
Heidi, did you want, I'm sorry, Heidi, you've been unmuted, if you can state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Heidi, I have already spoken. Thank you.
No additional raised hands, Madam Chair. Great. Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm going to put this forward, this motion forward. I'm going to, given that we heard a lot of opposition, community opposition, and the concern regarding fire, I, I did hear in terms of kind of exceeding the- kind of exceeding the side yard, but typically in a lot, when you set up the front and yard, very weird setback, you know, in this case, the rear setback typically was 20 feet in a given kind of prototype condition. This is a very odd site, which is almost an L. But the applicant applied the side yard, because that is the correct way of reading the zoning. But the intention was to allow enough buffer in the rear onto the property. And so with that, I'm going to put a motion forward of denial without prejudice.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stemberich?
Uh, no.
Mr. Shepherd?
No.
Mr. Valencia?
No.
Ms. Bedebraza?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
No.
The chair also votes no. The motion does not, or actually, the motion does carry? Oh, no, the motion does not carry, sorry. Sorry.
You had one, you didn't have five?
Did I have five? Did I have four? Well, the motion didn't, did I carry? How are you... My mouth is getting bad.
The motion does not carry.
Okay. So may I have another motion?
Through the chair. I would like to make a motion for approval with BPDA design review, because basically I feel that things are... They're in line, you know. John Hanley is playing very well. And I do like to make a motion for approval with BPDA design review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stemberich?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bedebraza?
No.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
No.
The chair votes yes, the motion carries.
And a queue, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Okay, I know we have one more case, but I think we need a break. So apologies to...
Please.
But let's take a 15-minute break.
Recording stopped.